Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, January 24, 2018, special meeting of the Glendale Transportation and Parking Commission. Can I have the first item on the agenda, please?
Item number one is roll call. Commissioner Makary. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Kirkjian.
Here.
Chairperson Yakubian.
Here. Next item, please.
Item 1A is flag salute by Chairperson Yakubian.
Please stand and join me in honoring our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. What is the next item?
Item two is posting of the agenda. The agenda for the Wednesday, January 24, 2018, special meeting of the Glendale Transportation and Parking Commission was posted by Monday, January 22, 2018, before 5:00 p.m. on the Fullerton Board outside of City Hall.
Next item.
Item three is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The commission may question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decisions. I have no speaker cards.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item.
Item number four is public hearing. Arroyo Verdugo Communities Joint Powers Authorities, Measure M, Future Public Participation Plan, 41A, consideration of the method of public input for the Arroyo Verdugo Communities Joint Powers Authority Measures and Future Public Participation Plan. This will be presented by our Assistant Director, Edward Hedy.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Yakubian and the Commissioners, Caucasian and Mr. Gonzalez. Before you, the staff will be presenting the report that mentioned the title earlier and where respectfully, the staff is recommending to consider the methods on how this city in the future will be soliciting input from the public for future Measure M that would become available this year. The staff is -- those instructions was given or asked by Metro, who's holding the Measure M as the, like, the bank, in a sense. And when the city require or ask for releasing funds to support or fund a project, we have to follow certain procedures, and that's what you see tonight. So the staff is requesting for you to consider having this commission, the Transportation and Parking Commission, to be the city forum or the formal, official city body who represent the city, the governing body who represent the city, to take that role on behalf of the commission or on the council or on behalf of the city for future input that will be soliciting from the public for projects that will become in the future. So what the staff is asking tonight, if you like to be that commission taking that role in representing the city for future action, that staff becomes before you for support, as well as that body will be soliciting and accepting input from the public. And this is all coming, as mentioned earlier, you know, from Metro guidelines. It's kind of similar to Measure R. As you know, Measure M at one point been identified as R2 when start circulating for public support. And when it passes in 2016, kind of you look at the Measure R has a sunset, only half cent on a dollar sale tax, but will be really ended in 2039, 30 years from when it started back in 2009. After that, will be no funds available. The Measure M kind of, it start in 2016, but it picks up when the sunset of Measure R ends. Means it will continue for perpetuity, really. There's no deadline or sunset when Measure R will end. However, when it picks up where, Measure R will picks up Measure R in 2039 and will become another, will combine the half a cent on a dollar, means become one cent on a dollar from that point on. Now you do have them both, but half cent each. What the Metro decided to do, as you know, we are part of Arroyo Verdugo Communities Joint Power Authority. And they get bunch of money or certain amount of money, mainly Metro divided based on population. We are part of other city agencies, neighboring cities. We have the county and Montrose, La Cressena area, City of La Cañada, Burbank, Pasadena and South Pasadena, all of six cities. Each one actually will doing the same thing this month because of the deadline, by the 27th, they have to present minutes or some evidence to Metro to say, we did the first step. First step means we did identify the body who will be representing the city and who will be accepting public input in the future. Once that step is completed, the next step is for the staff to, all with the other cities, to hire consultant to prepare the public participation plan. Again, those guidelines being set by Metro, kind of give you, show you the protocol and the steps, how to invite and engage the public and solicit input on a project in a public right of way, public works project mainly, and make sure you follow that protocol, you have that step been taken care of. Then you form, you prepare a list of projects that we solicit your support and the public support before we present it to the JPIA Arroyo Verdugo Communities Subregion. Once each city submit that list, they will take it, they'll submit it to Metro for their board for support, review and approval. Now what it does, it really qualify the city now to go, after those project been identified and get the support, then we can go to Metro asking for releasing or obligate the funds to fund those improvements. So really, that's what you see through the next step, what you're gonna see, once we have the PPPs, the public participation plan available or prepared by the consultant will bring it before you. When we have the list, we bring it before you and looking by the spring of this, summer this year, should be, have presented before the, present it to Metro at that time. The governing board, they really meet on quarterly basis. They have meeting on February 1st and May 3rd, August 2nd and November, November 1st. This is the Arroyo Verdugo governing body that we act upon or we go, that's where the city meets. Then that governing body or the, who represent those six cities, they will take those actions to Metro Board for approval.
Who represents City of Glendale within that governing body?
That will be your commission. That's what we're here tonight.
Oh, so we're gonna have to attend their meetings as well?
No, no, no. Those five cities and the county are really represented by Arroyo Verdugo Communities Joint Power Authority. They will do that effort between now all those, that subregion and Metro, that board will handle the next step. Our role here or your role, the commission, will be just make sure you, you are the one who represent our city, Glendale, and you are the one, mean that commission will accept input from the public.
Mr. Hedy, can I ask you, you mentioned the spring or summer to go to Metro, that was to present the PPP?
And the list.
And the list of projects.
List of project.
So.
So they can program it and they will look at the priorities. This is one other step, actually, we not just prepare the PPP, that consultant also will be like, like the person who coordinate among those six agency, because each agency may have their own priorities, their own project. And they will look how much money you get every year, because it's not all the money available, Measure M, it's gonna build up on its way up. And they will see how much that region will get, they divided up, and they try to prioritize it. That individual play that role and prepare that spreadsheet.
Just, just so I can understand in terms of how it all plays out, you're going to Metro with the PPP and the list of the projects that, now, is it after that point that we are then submitting, coming, I mean, that's, that's the final submission?
That's the first, then Metro.
So between now and then, we would have already gotten all of the public input? So you're anticipating between now and the beginning of summer?
Correct. From now till the summer, we should have the PPP in place, we should have the list with the public input in place, and we take it to Metro.
To Metro?
Correct.
Okay. You don't go first to the, you don't go first to the Arroyo Verdugo Authority?
We will take it there to give them that list.
Oh, to give them that?
And that consultant, who we hire him to prepare the PPP, will organize and prioritize those projects.
Okay.
And that will be the official list that the board, the JPIA, will take it to Metro.
And do you anticipate in terms of if this body were to, to be receiving, take on this responsibility, will those projects be brought in all at once for public input? Or would you anticipate a few at a time?
Please.
How do you, how do you plan, how do you foresee?
Well, once the staff will identify the project, we look at how much money is available. This is a five-year CIP. So we're gonna have a list of project, you know, that we know of or the staff anticipate or something, we'll make sure it's eligible first for the Measure M funding, which we, the staff will do so. And so we'll have like five years' worth of projects, of CIP, projected, you know, and estimated and based on, by term we get the funds through the design, construction, that could be a dynamic list.
Okay.
But yes, that's the list that will be available at that time to take it before Metro.
Okay.
Let me ask you another question. You said the funds are available by percentage of the population within the Verdugo Communities. Let's say we, you count with a list where we may require more money or someone else city requires some more money that's, the way it's allocated by percentage, how are we gonna fight that out? Who's gonna fight that out?
Good, good, good question, Commissioner Caucasian. Each city now, the, what we all know, it's really based on population. But let's say, and that will be between cities or amongst cities to discuss it at the JPIA meeting or board, whether, let's say Pasadena or La Cañada, you know, they said, you know, Glendale, you have big projects, but really you're not ready for it. Can I upfront some money? Can you upfront some money from you? Because I have small projects, I can finish it. And when time comes, their money can be shifted back to us. This is kind of close to Measure R. There is some flexibility on that, but they cannot, a city come impose, it's more mutually agreed that it's not like if they have bigger project and they have priority, no, we have to give up our money. That's something will be discussed among, among those six agencies. Metro, for them, they don't have a say, they don't, they don't get involved in those details as long as those six agencies are all on board and agree on which project will go first or whether I'm short in money, can I take or borrow your money upfront?
Really, I said that because you come from La Cañada, La Cañada is a bedroom community. And whereas during a day in Glendale, population goes up, there's more people here, we need streets, public transportation.
Sure.
Which use more in Glendale than City of La Cañada, for example.
Correct, correct. But you do have way much more funding than City of La Cañada. Your city, City of La Cañada, a little bit under 21,000. You have 200,000. So you're already 10 times.
I'm just giving you an example.
Yeah, you know, that's a good example. And that's why we're saying, you know, we have larger project, more money, you may take longer time to have it, to execute it. What in that window where you said, you know, other cities could be short, I use La Cañada example, any other cities, you know, that say, they are, they have project available, you know, shelf ready and really they can, they can start construction and we haven't even maybe select the project or get approved or, or we haven't started design. There is some flexibility, but that to be discussed amongst cities at that time.
Questions, please? Thank you for the introduction and the information. A couple of questions that come to mind. The communities that you mentioned, in my understanding then that should this group be the one that would, receiving the public input, there would be members from those other communities in addition to members from Glendale, is that correct?
Each, each agency will hold their own meetings, they have their own project, and they have their own input.
So we would be primarily hearing from Glendale residents?
Correct. And we only invite Glendale residents.
Okay.
Now, if, now if two, three cities, they find some common project that benefit all or, you know.
Sure.
That's something to be considered, but at this point, you know, there's a guideline what project is qualified or not, whether there's a joint venture at one point, that's something to be determined once each one present their own list and see what they have on the table.
So I understand this would, the body would not be taking any action, it would be primarily a facilitator, and this is a question, a facilitator and then a putting together of the information and then having it reported, as you said.
Will be.
There's no action item, but no recommendations to the city council or anything like that?
There, there will be, because we solicit the input, whether those, see what the input the staff and the commission see, it's valid, maybe let's go back, let's say change the scope of work or the project limits or add some feature in it that within the guidelines, and we'll take it back, we'll bring it back again to you, and yes, we need your blessing on that.
And then that.
The PPP will define what action and what kind of process that we need. That's to be, to be determined. But, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay.
So, so, yes, we take that. However, here I notice the, anything you do here, you prepare RFP, you wanna advertise a project before you even, you wanna design project, they bring it before the council and kind of, you know, bring up a list of project and tell them, you know, we need your authorization to send out RFP, authorization to advertise a project before it come, because mostly of the cities they do when it comes to award, they bring it before the city council on small cities. So we'll do the same thing here, just to make sure, no surprise for the council, that these are project, we took it before the commission, we got the public input and support, and we follow the guidelines, that now will make it eligible to receive Measure M fund, and here those are the list. You've taken some burden, some role that the council will play rather than every time we have project, we have that list, we're gonna have big on the long agenda, big public hearing and to address those project or get input.
And the proposed projects would be presented by staff and Metro or by Metro or only staff?
No, those are city project will be presented by the city staff.
By the city staff, okay.
Correct. What, what Metro does, they take those project, they present to their board, and they show that the city or the agency did follow those procedures and so they can authorize them to programming and obligate those fund and have it available for release when expenditures come into play.
And what do you, what is your estimate on the number of meetings that would transpire in 2018 for that function of being the entity to receive public input on the projects?
You know.
What is your estimate?
The key is now is to have the PPP in place. Once we have that.
That's for the consultant?
That's what the consultant does.
So.
And meanwhile, we will have in-house meeting and in February, the staff, they have already in their mind what kind of project, what the list we have, but to, to formalize it and bring it before you, when I see what are we in the PPP, because there's some guidelines has to be followed. In February, maybe can, I can bring you more input on that in term of the timeline, but, and this is new program to start with, there is no PPP out there. Could be for other reason, but, but for Measure M, it's very brand-new program, and even those guidelines kind of came after that Measure passed to see, figure out how that multi-billion dollars money expecting in the next X years, how can it be distributed and what's the mechanism need to put in place, make sure each city or each region or each county get that fund.
What is your anticipation of the, any potential conflict relative to the other business of the commission that we normally run into on a, let's say, a monthly or bimonthly basis? What do you see as, how this relates to that? Or will there be additional meetings or will there be meetings scheduled on our regular business and then also as a part of that meeting act as the entity for receiving public input? Or would there be separate meetings? And what do you see on the additional work of staff and the commissioners?
Good questions. Unless there's an urgency, we're either, there's a time constraint, give you example tonight, because we need to meet, you know, the 27th deadline for, for Metro. Unless there's some, some urgency, some funding may not be available, some deadline we may receive from Metro, then the staff may analyze and see, you know, we only meet every other month, we probably, we need that gap, we need that meeting in between, then we'll notify you and notify the public. There will be list of project, I don't think it's gonna be all dumped at the same time in term, that's why it's a five-year CIP project. But if we need more meetings, we'll give you heads up. But if, if the timeline, when it's set and if it's clear on Metro and if there's no surprises, I think every other month should be sufficient.
So in response to that question, Madam Chair and others, I, I think it would be important to actually set meetings so we can get them into our calendars, and if it's not needed, cancel it, if that's at all possible. It's very hard to just get meetings, you know, informa, like we have this other one coming up that I cannot be here, because I have a.
The joint meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's because.
I see what you're gonna do.
I'm wondering if, and I would ask our colleagues here, how you would feel about, about that. I think it would be important to get something on the calendar so that the public would know that's when the meetings are held.
Yes.
Now, if staff determines that there's no need for a meeting, then we could say there's no meeting. But I just think the notion of when to have a meeting and then we have to get into our calendars, for me, it's a little challenging.
We don't wanna send a false alarm and, and in term of throwing so many meetings, and here you clear your agenda and we'll tell you last minute, no, you, we don't need it. What really it helps the staff to commit to certain meetings, and once we have the consultant on board and prepare the PPP.
Okay.
That's really the key for us, then the rest should be very clear to us whether we need more, because even publicating, we need to notify ahead also.
And when will that, when will the consultant be in place?
After all the cities, as you see the one in the attachment, finished all those meetings, and we're gonna have a meeting in, I believe, in February also. That will, there will be board meeting in February, that will be on February 1st. And then there will be, we'll have another meeting following the board meeting, it's a sub, subcommittee formed by all the cities. Basically, the director of city engineers or the engineers or the staff start, will go, we have Pasadena preparing the RFP to send out, as we speak, they are preparing the RFP to send out, requesting proposal qualification also, RQ, to prepare the PPP.
So the, who is the consultant technically contracted with, Metro or the city?
No, with the, with the region, with the JPIA.
With the Joint Powers?
Correct.
That's the entity that hires?
Correct. And all those six agency will share the cost.
Okay.
To pay for that consultant.
So there's gonna be an RFP going out for that consultant?
Correct, correct, correct. And City of Pasadena offer to take the lead on that, so.
And these, and these other communities are, they have their own entity that they're designating as the, as the entity to receive the public input?
Correct. Most likely will be some form of commission they have, you know, they have, like, La Cañada, the Public Road Traffic Commission. Actually, they will be, they will be taking, taking the lead on that, yeah, like we're doing here, and the other city the same. Now, the county may have the, the town council may take the lead, or I don't know if they have their own commission, it depends how they are structured, will take the lead for the county sections, for the county portion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I would, Mr. Hedy, I would just say that the next meeting for the TPC, should this pass tonight, that we would have a update at the next meeting on the 20.
On the 26.
Right.
On the traffic coming.
As much information as you can give us.
We'll.
I agree with Commissioner Gonzalez, as much heads up. I understand we can't look too much into the crystal ball.
Not at this point, but definitely.
Yeah, right. No, I understand that.
Give us two, three, three, four months at most.
Of course.
We'll have, even for, for all the other cities too.
Okay.
But we probably be able to at least give you some update on the RFP.
Okay.
Knowing now all the cities, they should finish by the end of this month, that commitment from cities, who's the governing body who represents the city and who will be receiving those public input. So we'll have that by the end of this month. By, by next meeting in February, definitely we'll have some, some, some update for you on that.
So if there's no.
Thank you.
No other further comments, then I would then respectfully ask for a motion to select the Transportation and Parking Commission as the city's forum for solicitation of public input for the AVC JPA Measure M Public Participation Plan, and that the public input for the AVC JPA Measure M Public Participation Plan be received at future regular or special transportation and parking commission meetings. Do I hear a motion?
I saw move.
Do I hear a second? Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Next item.
Item five is commission staff comments and updates.
I have just, just friendly reminder, and you already touched on it, on the next couple meetings, that will be the one in February, on February 26, where the staff, and we have traffic engineer here tonight also, is working on the, preparing the traffic coming guidelines around the school and parks. This is something, you've seen it before, but the staff kind of, were getting concern and complain in term of speeding, especially speeding around the school, and the issue about the implementation of the humps or the speed bumps. If that's something, sometimes there's a guidelines due to safety also, it's not like you just install it on a steep street in rainy season, that will hydroplane the car, you can't just put speed bump when, when people believe that they need it. However, the staff is looking where it can still be implemented in a safely manner, but under certain condition and certain specific location, such as school and parks, where you have more heavily pickup drop of pedestrian traffic than any other activities within the city. So the staff looking into, not just even the adjacent street serving the cities, the school or the park, maybe within X radius from those sites where it could be part of the safe route to school, access to those streets, to those schools and facilities, come up with some, you know, traffic calming measure, as well as give more chance for the implementation of speed humps, which really the criteria we have today, it kind of limit you, the implementation or allowing to construct those, those kind of improvements. So that's what we're gonna see at the next meeting. The staff is working on that, on that, with that thought in mind. And the, you mentioned on the joint use meeting that the planning called for, that will be on March, March 7 at 5:00 p.m. at the planning facility or in room 105 at East Broadway 633. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I thought it was March 5.
Um, March 7, thank you. And we'll send you a reminder, if there's a confusion on that, we'll, we'll go ahead, send email, friendly reminder with the date, location and the information. I think there's, there's some document will be released also. This is draft IR for the South Glendale.
That's a big meeting, Mr. Hedy. Will staff be providing coffee? That's gonna be a long one, I think.
You got it.
I'll put that request in.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So contrary to what I said earlier, it appears that I could make that because I thought it was the 5th, wasn't it the 5th at one time?
Oh, I see.
No, it's at 5:00 PM, so it's on March 7. They normally have their meetings on Wednesdays.
We'll, we'll send email, we'll confirm, but that's the information that you have. It's March 7.
Thank you.
And we're looking between 5, 5 and 8, but it's, that meeting is set for room 105 at 633 East Broadway, City of Glendale. Not La Quenada, I see, that's not.
5:00 PM. At 5:00 PM, and it won't be here, it would be in the Public Services Building.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
First floor.
Okay, thank you.
Room 105.
Commissioner Kirkjian, any comments? No? Okay, just one quick thing, Mr. Hiddy. Do we know with the pedestrian plan circulating now, I think we're still in the public comment phase? Am I correct in that?
I don't know if the staff has any update on the pedestrian plan.
When will it be headed to council? Because I really wanna make sure that's.
We'll get an update in February.
Yeah, if you could give us an update.
We are providing only input to this plan, not the taking the lead on it. But we'll give you, we'll give you update.
Yeah, I'd be curious just to get a heads up when it's headed to council at that point. That would be great. And then, most importantly, I would like to wish Commissioner Gonzalez a very happy 34th birthday, which is, which is tomorrow?
Saturday.
Saturday, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Armando. We hope you have many, many more and enjoy your, I'm sure knowing you, you're on a trip somewhere.
We are, short trip.
Short trip, short, short trip, okay. Well, happy birthday. Yeah, and that's it, next, next item, if there's no other comments?
Item six is adjournment.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you very much.